Future, we thank you Father God for allowing us to continue our distance learning as well as our feeding program. I ask Father to continue to touch our children, our students, touch all of our faculty members, all teachers, all staff certified and classified, bless our superintendent, our board members, and everyone that's assembled here tonight. And we pray Father God that we will continue to do things that will be pleasing to you in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. In Jesus' most holy and righteous name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let me add two real quick before we get started. We've got some weather coming through. If we should lose power and lose all this connectivity down here, everybody just stay tuned and we'll try to get everything back up and running as soon as we can. Hopefully that won't happen.
All right. And like I said earlier, we will do the roll call vote, so I'll call for a motion second, and then I'll go through each of the board members and see how you vote so we can keep up to this for minutes and things like that. Start off with, we have agenda. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's any discussion on the agenda, if not, we've got a motion and a second to approve them.
You will notice on the agenda, I'm sorry, but you'll notice on the agenda that public participation under the guidance of legal counsel, there's a statement there that states that we will not be having public participation at tonight's work session. Also, I did participate in a webinar with GSVA yesterday, and Phil Hartley, the attorney for GSVA, also recommended not having the executive session at this time because of the COVID-19. So you'll notice on the agenda, it says that that we won't have it tonight. Public participation.
You say, um, Father.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilkerson.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion by Ms. Miller, a second by Mr. Dowers. How do you vote, Ms. Wilkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Dowers?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah.
All right, Dr. Leece?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The amendments, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our last month's board meeting. Are there any questions about those minutes? Any amendments or changes we need to make to the minutes? If there's no objections, we'll place the minutes on our regular monthly meeting that precedes this meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is the financial reports. And under financial reports, we have the March financial report. Scrolling is a challenge. Let me move something on my screen. Y'all can't see on my screen, but there's a tab that has all your bases on it, so, all right, that should help me. All right, you see the month ending March 31, fund equity of $21,615,544.33. We began this year with $14,950,260.85. Are there any questions about the financial statement? The next document that we have is the comparison report. This gives us an overview of our end of month fund equity as compared to last year, the year before, and FY 217. So you can see that we're in a pretty good financial position right now. Ms. Yawn, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there any comments you would make about this?
Just comparing to the previous month, you know, it shows that we're up about $36,000. And then compared to last year, you know, it shows that last year we were down about 75. So, you know, it's trending well for the year, the end of school year.
The next document is the detail report. This breaks it out by revenue and then the different budget areas. Any comments, questions about this? Ms. Yawn, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, sir, no. Maybe that, you know, the bottom, it shows our fund equity as of March 31, at the $21,615,998.53.
And then the next document is the SPOS. And I was pleased to see our SPOS revenue last month was up, the March revenue. It'll be real interesting to see how April comes in. With everybody going out to the grocery stores and buying up the way they've been buying up, it may be, maybe.
So that's gonna be, Mr. Preston, didn't you say that's a month behind the way it's reported?
Anyway, I think that's gonna be, like I say, February, so I don't know how much effect this had on that yet. I think next month will be the one that I'm curious to see, tell us.
That's right.
How much it changed up.
All right, those are the financial reports. If it pleases the board, we'll place those on the consent agenda at the meeting following this regular meeting. Policy, we have the travel policy that we've been working on. It's the field trip policy and revisions to that. And the draft that is before you, you'll notice that we've struck that first statement about out-of-state field trips. We did put a 1 in our last work session, we saw where there was a, it wasn't numbered correctly, so we put a 1 there for instructional field trips. And you'll see, we've placed instructional field trips over 300 miles. We took out out-of-state. And we have looked at the map and looked at the mileage. There's nowhere in Georgia that would be more than 300 miles. So the 300 miles would have to be out-of-state, but that would allow us Jacksonville, some of those type places where we seem to have groups going like each ROTC, where that wouldn't have to be board approved each time, or to the Museum of Science and History, where we send a lot of kindergarten classes and such as that.
Is that 300 miles, um, one way?
One way, yes, ma'am.
Is there, one way?
One way, yes, ma'am. And then number two, state, regional, national competitions. If you go down to right here, the principal shall ensure that trips essential to carry out only approved activities with established rules, guidelines, or policies of the state board or local board prior to seeking superintendent's approval. Competitive teams and/or entities must advance in progression to warrant travel over 300 miles for competition. You'll notice that these competitions, this type of trip will not require board approval, but will require superintendent approval. And then extracurricular, which would it be athletics? You'll also notice there that we have, it will read, for trips more than 300 miles, and I don't think this got edited. I think that, Ms. Miller, we edited that this morning, didn't we? But evidently, Robin, we had already loaded this version on eboard, but it should be.
We did, I thought we edited it on here, but.
Yeah, I can pull it up. Let me go into policies on here and show you what the change is. So you'll see under extracurricular trips, for extracurricular activities, this would be athletics. Instructional time laws for extracurricular activities should not exceed one school day unless otherwise approved by the principal or principal's designated. And then for travel over 300 miles, the principal shall ensure that the trip is essential to carry out. So that will require the superintendent's approval, over 300 miles, if it's athletics. So essentially, what these changes do, it requires board approval for instructional field trips over 300 miles, and that's up here under instructional field trips. And then for competitive type events like the FFA National Steer Show, or the National Hog Show, or something of that nature, if it's a competition that's over 300, they would be required to get superintendent approval, but not necessarily board approval. If it's an athletic event, that's covered under extracurricular, they would be, once again, if it's over 300 miles, they would have to get the superintendent's approval, but not board approval. Board approval would be required for traditional field trips over 300 miles. I'm very comfortable. Sir?
Why are you changing assistant principal for instruction? We put a principal designated in there.
Because it could be somebody other than the assistant principal of instruction. For example, we've got two, what we call just assistant principals at the high school now, and also the athletic director may be, may be involved with the decision-making process, especially when it falls, that falls under extracurricular, which would be the athletics. So we felt like that just putting assistant principal for instruction was not descriptive of who that might be. So it felt like the principal's designated would be a better description.
We voting on this tonight?
No, sir. You don't have to. I mean, it's on the table. It's, we can, since, you know, there's maybe questions, we can table it another month. We're not gonna have any trips anytime soon, it doesn't look like.
I'd like to wait until I can come in and talk to you about it.
All right. All right?
But, hey, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, like I say, it's not fine, Preston. I mean, I like the policy myself, and we got plenty of times, if you want to talk to him about it before we do something, that's fine with me.
Yeah. Hey, I'd like to get this right.
But it's something that you don't want us to know about, Justin?
No, ma'am.
See, you got to talk to him about it separately.
Well, we're looking at you. You can come in and talk too, if you want to. I'll call you when I come in to talk to him, and you can come too.
Well, it depends on if this virus still running. And you could just make a meeting with him and this.
Do what?
I was just wondering that. I asked, but like I said, it just depend on if this virus still out. I might not make it then.
Oh. I'd be gone by then.
Oh, okay.
I like it. I think it cleans up our policy. I don't think that a lot of these field trips necessarily should have to be approved by the board. I think the principals can take care of that. I think there's a lot of things that come up sometimes between our board meetings that need to be handled, and that gives him the ability to do that without them having to wait on another board meeting to get it taken care of. I think it cleans a lot of things up. I think it makes this policy a lot easier to deal with, but like I say, we don't have any field trips or any activities for the next several months, so if you want to come in and talk to him and get your mind, or questions answered, mind around, we can do that, talk about next board meeting. So we'll, we can table it right now, and we'll table it up next meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Let me get back to the agenda. Well, I may have closed out the meeting altogether. All right, the next item on the agenda is the scoreboard for Jardine Stadium. We talked about this at the retreat. The scoreboards at Jardine Stadium, the current ones are, they're really in bad shape, need to be replaced, so we, we received some, looked at some different proposals of some of them, looked at some of the real fancy ones, like they've got some of the other schools and such, and, but when, was all said and done, I think the most feasible program is for us to continue with the scoreboards that we have been installing. We installed a new scoreboard at the softball field from this same company and this same design. We installed new scoreboard at the soccer field, and we installed a new scoreboard at the baseball field. And so this would just be a continuation of those replacements of those old scoreboards that needed to be replaced, and we'll replace the one at Jardine Stadium with the same model and the same design that we've been putting at those other fields using this same vendor. So the price came in, I felt like really, really good as we looked at some of those other models from some of those other companies, and this is, this is very, I think, much in line with our budget, and gives us an opportunity to get a good-looking scoreboard that's the same type of scoreboard we've been installing at our other fields. So I'm not asking for approval for this tonight, just asking to present this to the board and then come back at our May meeting and ask for approval. Are there any questions?
Is this the scoreboard that's already out there?
This is, yes, ma'am. The scoreboard that's out there.
So it's gonna be the same one?
It will, if you see the design here, it'll look just like this. It's very similar to what's at the baseball field and the softball field. That'll be the big one on the south end will be that, and then there's a small one at a football field. You have to have the small one at the other end, and this will be the small one at the other end. It'll replace what's out there. And those that are out there are really in bad shape. They're, they're giving us a lot of problems aesthetically. They don't, they're pretty worn out. Next on the agenda, we have student handbook, and we've got the changes, the list of changes. Dr. Banks has been working with the principals to get proposed changes for the handbook, and this is the list of proposed changes so far. Dr. Banks, you want to speak to these changes?
Yes, these changes that you have right before you now, they are a document that we have on Google Docs.
It's not on mine.
I want to update actual the page number so you'll hear it more clearly. I see it more clearly on your hard copy of the handbook. Every board member should have a hard copy of the handbook, I'm sure. I don't think you had it before you tonight, but most of the changes that we have that's right before you there came from the middle school. As far as guidelines for dress code, they wanted to take out the part where item five says shirts that hang lower than the front and back pockets of your pants must be tucked in at all times. They wanted to just take that statement out. Last year, I guess one of the big things that the middle school pertained to the dress code and the area of holes in pants, that type of thing, part of that definition, we had frills, and instead of having frills, they should say frays. So we're gonna have that added to the handbook for the 2021 school year, and there came some problem throughout the year with patches allowed or patches not allowed. So for the upcoming school year, we want to say patches are not allowed at all. Any comments on that?
You're saying no patches allowed at all?
No patches are allowed. Patches are not allowed. That caused some problems with some of the disciplinary problems that we had this past year, so they thought it would be best to minimize that by saying you can't have a patch on your pants at all.
Dr. Banks, could you expand on that a little bit? Because I know if a child has a hole in their pants near their, whatever, parent or whomever puts a patch on it, I mean, I'm not understanding the difference involving it or not.
I guess their rationale is some pants that you buy, you buy those pants with patches already on them. So they're saying pretty much for the school's sake of clothing and what kids are wearing now, they felt that patches will not be allowed, permitted at all. Now, we can have more discussion on that part, but I don't want to see it bogged down on it, but that's, that's coming from the middle school staff, the administrative staff.
Well, I think we do need to emphasize a little bit more on that one because it was a lot of problem with that dress code, you know, when the teachers are not respecting the dress code, and then they expect so much from the kids, but, you know, we do need to talk a little bit more about that, those jeans and, you know, you know, just trying to see about the patches, because I know I have ironed some patches on my boy's jeans, you know. It's been a minute, but, you know, I don't know if people are still, you know, patching up holes and stuff since they can't have no kind of holes on there, and you might do have some parents that can't afford to buy more of jeans, and they might do go to Walmart and buy patches to, you know, to iron on, you know. So I think they need to be, you know, a little more clear about what they mean on the patch, you know.
I think that's something we can revisit.
Yeah, if we're asked about it, I would like to be able to explain the reasoning.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, y'all take, I'm sorry, but board members, we will, we will take this back, this feedback, and certainly revisit these items. This is kind of just a first read, so if you have any more concerns about it, please reach out to me, and I can get with Dr. Banks, we get together, and we'll go back and revisit this. So none of this is in stone yet, but I do have some questions too about that. And so, Dr. Banks, any more on that?
No, that's all on that. That was all the change in dress code. The other sections, we can go through at a later time, but one of the things that came up pertaining to forbidden items is on the knife, the knife section, they want to make that a knife of two or more inches is not permitted at any time on school grounds.
All right.
Any comments on that?
You say a knife?
Yes. It's illegal to have a knife of two or more inches at school at any time. It's illegal to have a knife at all, period, but.
I was gonna say, yeah, I didn't know if they could have a knife.
Yeah. I've got some questions, I've got some questions about that myself. I think we're gonna have to revisit that piece. I, I don't, we're gonna, we're gonna definitely have some conversations about that. Knives are forbidden, period. So we'll, we'll go back and revisit that before bringing it back to the board.
Can you pull up the section on the actual handbook, so I can go to threats right quick? I need some feedback on the section, on threats. Can you pull up the other section up in the assembly? The other attachment there?
Let me see.
Dr. Banks, is it?
Yeah. Do you know where that's at in here, Dr. Banks?
Scroll down, scroll down your section, maybe you can see page 25. It should be highlighted there. I just wanted to read that statement pertaining to threats, because that has become a big concern, not only in our county, but throughout the whole state and throughout the nation, our kids or anyone making a threat. Continue to scroll. It should come up highlighted in yellow. It should say by page 25 on your, on your screen there, right before the weapons section. It should come up shortly.
Right there.
Yeah, right there. That section I put in there pertaining to threats, that's a statement to me that's powerful, that covers a lot of plethora of things that happens throughout the school year, a lot of things with technology, bullying, and certain things that happens. This is a, this is a situation that I think we can cover many, many areas pertaining to level four infractions within our school district. So board members, we, time, just take time to read over that statement pertaining to threats. I think that can help many of our situations within, within our elementary and secondary schools.
All right. So definitely, that's, that's good content there. We'll spend some time over the next couple of weeks reading that, and we'll come back to the board at our May meeting for more input on. We'll come back to the board at our May meeting for more input on the handbooks.
And I'll go back and revisit it in middle school about that dress code policy they wanted to implement or update based upon the conversation that we had here tonight.
Yeah, because on that dress code, man, I, these teachers, they got to respect that dress code. They want the kids to abide by.
Right.
All right, I made a note of the patches on the dress code and then also the knife, two inches or more. We'll get with our legal counsel on that and look at that. All right.
Yeah, can I step in on the patch?
Yes, sir.
Real quick. So I, I would be, you know, if a parent is repairing clothing, that's one thing. If it's a patch of like an insignia or a symbol or something like that, that's an issue. I think that's something else. If we get clarification, that'd be good.
Yes, sir, we will, we will.
All right. COVID-19 updates and planning. Wanted to update the board on, on the activities that have been going on in the school district. Of course, we've got Ms. Miller on the line with us, our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction and Curriculum. Ms. Miller, you want to go over this, this document with us?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to just say thank you so much to all of our food service employees and our bus drivers and teachers and administrators and our whole Coffey County Schools Assistant Staff who have really stepped up and done a great job during this unprecedented times that we're in right now. Last week, on April 15th, we distributed more learning packets. And our teachers are continuing still to push out lessons in Google Classroom for those students who are doing online learning, either with their own device or with a device that we have distributed to them. We will continue that, those learning opportunities until the week of May 11th. And on May 11th and May 13th, we have set two hours aside each of those days for instructional materials and Chromebooks to be returned to all elementary schools and middle schools. Of course, our schools will send out specific details because each school, they, even though our times are all the same for all those schools, they do things a little differently at each school. So they will send specific details via social media, Kenvo, Facebook, that kind of thing to make sure parents are aware of what logistically will happen on those days for those schools. Then on, that's on, that's the 11th and 13th. And then on the 14th and 15th, which is Thursday and Friday of the same week, all instructional materials and Chromebooks will be returned to our high schools, Coffey High School, Wiregrass Regional College Career Academy, and George Washington Carver Freshman Campus. And here again, those times may vary by location, but those schools will send out specific details for those parents and students on how to return those materials. We have had questions about pre-K registration this afternoon. April Thomason and I participated in a bright from the start webinar. And we heard from several different systems how they're doing or are planning to do registrations. So we are working on that. Dr. Newell and I talked a little bit after the webinar. And we're gonna get together and finalize some plans for registration for pre-K and then push that information out through our social media, Facebook, our school website, our district website, and of course, Kenvo. And then kindergarten registration, which is not nearly as large as pre-K registration, will also be done at a later date. And here again, we don't have any final details on that, but when we do, we'll push that information out. And so that, that's kind of the update and where we are. We did update our frequently asked questions today. I think Dr. Lee's might talk about that later. But we did update those today and those have been pushed out on Facebook and then have been updated on our website. As questions come in, we try to update those questions so that we're keeping parents abreast of, of what's going on. And just those questions that lots of people ask, we're trying to keep those answers out there for them.
And I've got that pulled up and I'm gonna attempt to share that with you, the frequently asked questions. And we just talked about when it's pre-K, when it's kindergarten registration. Ms. Miller just discussed those. Will there be a Coffey High School graduation for the class of 2020? Our plan is to have a traditional graduation ceremony. And I've been in close contact with the high school principal. We're hesitant to put a date out there right now just because there's so many unknowns. But I've talked with our board chairman numerous times about it and, and the board members numerous times about it. And we're committed to having a traditional graduation ceremony. It may have to be conducted a little bit different, but as close to traditional as possible. Sometime over the next several months, at some point. We may, may be able to do it sooner, we may have to put it off. So, and I've been talking with other superintendents and other systems. And, and the, the feedback I've gotten from other systems is we're all kind of in this wait and see pattern right now before we put a date out there till we see exactly how this situation progresses. So we are gonna have a traditional graduation ceremony though. I want to put all of our seniors at ease about that. We talked about when will Chromebooks be returned to schools? When will learning packets? That's on the FAQ also. So if anybody asks questions, they could go to that. Will my student be promoted this school year? We've talked about the fact that we're certainly gonna take into consideration the conditions. And I don't anticipate any more students being retained than we would normally have. So, you know, we're gonna look at each individual student based on their individual needs. But decisions about promotion and retention, we've made as they always have been on a case by case basis. But we don't anticipate students being retained. If they were on track, when we broke from school on March 16th, then, then I would anticipate they would be promoted as they always would be. When will activities such as athletics and extracurricular activities resume? All events sanctioned by the Georgia High School Association have been canceled for this school year. And we'll know more about some of the other normal activities like tryouts and things of that nature. The band director reached out, asking some questions about tryouts for band and such as that. Those things are, we're gonna work through that as soon as this condition changes in a positive way. But for right now, those, those events are on hold, just like everything else. How will grades be determined? We'll use the semester, either the ninth week's grade on March 13th or the semester cumulative grade at the end of the semester, whichever is higher. But we, we certainly don't want anybody's grade to drop as a result of what happened. And we're committed to making sure that that does not happen. Before the school year, I'd paid for a child's field trip. Schools will be working on refunds and they are going to mail those to parents for those kind of activities. All right, if they don't get their refund by May 13th, we're directing them to contact the school directly. And you'll read these other, other questions that are on the, the website. People can go to and find those questions and answers. We added these today. How will 2001 or 2000, 2021 ninth graders choose classes at George Washington Carver Freshman Campus? Students have been enrolled in core classes, math, science, social studies, English Language Arts. A Google form will be sent to students to complete for elective courses. So George Washington Carver will be conducting registration online for those students. If I want to attend Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy, what do I need to do? We've added that to the website. They'll click the link below. And any student who's interested in going to the ninth grade at the Career Academy, they, they need to go online with their parents and they can fill out the form on the website and go ahead and enroll for the Career Academy next year. And then also, is my ninth grader able to register for dual enrollment? The state has changed dual enrollment. They're not going to allow ninth graders to do dual enrolled classes and be eligible for funding. So the state has changed dual enrollment for ninth graders. And the state is not going to fund dual enrollment for ninth graders moving forward. Tenth graders, eleventh graders, and twelfth graders will be eligible to take dual enrollment. And they can go on our website and find the document that gives them more guidance. So those were the additions to the FAQ for some of the questions that have been asked. If anybody asks questions, go to our website and hopefully you can find an answer there. If you can't find an answer, you can call the district office or call your principal. And we will try to get answered any questions that people have. Because as, as Ms. Miller's pointed out and Dr. Banks has pointed out, this has certainly been a time as school officials that we've never experienced before. None of us in this country has experienced what we're going through right now. And we want to put our parents at ease. We want everybody to know that, that we care about your children, we care about you, we care about your family. And we're gonna do the best we can do to provide the best opportunities for our students in these trying times and certainly unprecedented times. So that, that's our FAQ question and answer on our website. And then the other piece on the website was the, or on the board agenda is the temperature log for employees and the coronavirus screening instrument that we're using. I wanted to share this with our board members and with our public in this public meeting. Just so that you know, we've got our feeding program going on. And I want to give a thanks to our nutrition department, to our transportation department, our maintenance, all of our, our folks, our law enforcement, our teachers, our parent professionals, everybody who's been involved, bus drivers, everybody who's been involved with that program. They've done a tremendous job. Thank you, board, for supporting us on that. And, but we are screening the employees in the nutrition department each day. When they come in, we have our nurses on staff and they are going over this screening document with each employee. And it's, it's a checklist that they go through with each employee. And you'll see they, they are asked a series of questions. And if somebody does not pass the screener, one of the activities is taking their temperature and they're not involved with the feeding program at that point. They're sent home until we can investigate further. So we are screening the employees involved with the nutrition program daily, all right? And then here is the temperature time log. We have our nurses on site at each one of the nutrition sites who are applying a thermometer and getting a, a temperature on each employee to ensure that they are, they're safe and that they are healthy as they prepare the food for the, the children to be delivered each day, all right? But I thought it was important for the board members to know the thoroughness of our staff who are all involved with this to make sure that it's being conducted safely, all right? Are there any questions about COVID-19 update and planning? Board members, do y'all have any, any questions about that? All right, district lines. We wanted to talk with the board about this at our retreat that we held back in February. We discussed the elementary schools and district lines. And you will see on this chart, the board tasked us with going back and looking at the enrollments at each one of our elementary schools and then studying the out of district transfers. And you'll notice that we had a question that we wanted to answer in this activity. I met with Ms. Miller and Dr. Banks and we had Dr. Joy Perrin in with us. And we looked at the data. And our question was how will data drive the decision to allow or not allow transfers? Well, after we looked at it, the fact that some of our schools are running out of instructional space, especially Indian Creek, they, they are at the max, actually over the max as far as instructional space at Indian Creek. We also looked at equity and then growth in the Indian Creek District. There's a lot of housing that's going up out in that district. So we anticipate an increase in enrollment at that school. So in looking at the enrollment at each one of the elementary schools in relation to out of district transfers, you'll see Ambrose has 61 out of district transfers, Eastside has 82, Indian Creek has 202, Satella has 60, Westside has 118. And you'll see that, that those students that are attending Ambrose from out of district, they have 24 from Buxton, have seven from Eastside, 12 from Indian Creek, and so forth. So I'm not gonna read all the numbers on that chart, but that gives you an idea of where the out of district transfers are coming from. At our retreat, we talked about going system wide and stopping out of district transfers completely. After looking at this, this chart and really studying the data, we came to the conclusion that really we're talking about the Indian Creek being, school being at capacity. That's the biggest issue that we're dealing with. We didn't feel like this was compelling enough to make changes for the entire system in regards to district lines. Because if you remember in our conversation at the retreat, we were looking at district lines and modifying some district lines. We didn't feel like the issue is compelling enough to do those kind of changes. There's no reason to redistrict students and move students throughout the district over this issue. We're really just talking about one side at this time being overcrowded. The timing with the COVID-19 and everything that families are going through and dealing with this situation, there's enough stress on families right now that we just don't believe we need to add additional stress to our families in Coffey County worrying about which school their child will be able to attend and if they'll have to change schools because of these district changes and such. People are dealing with enough to not have to worry about changing districts and such as that. So we certainly want to put processes in place to control transfers. We have those processes currently in place. Principals have a lot of control over transfers and we need to make decisions based on actual enrollment. Solutions, allow sibling transfers. We had talked at one point about siblings not being able to go even if they have another sibling at one school, if they're not district formed, we wouldn't let them go. Well, we're gonna allow the siblings to go where their other sibling is at. And so we're, we're gonna, we're gonna allow those, those transfers to continue. It's what we would like to do. We don't see with the COVID-19 and all the uncertainties going on, we don't want to put that pressure on families to have to make those kind of decisions. Control growth by limiting future out of district transfers. That's, that's what we see as the way to control growth, is to look at the kindergarten out of district transfers and, and essentially just start there. So, you know, what we were proposing is no, no new transfers into the schools that have the crowding problems. Just shut down the out of district transfers for, for new transfers in and then monitor class sizes and make decisions based on enrollment. So that's what we were coming back to the board with. Are there any questions about that?
Dr. Lee, I don't have any questions, but I do want to express my appreciation for you and Ms. Miller and Dr. Banks looking at that again. I think that that, that you come to a very good conclusion with that.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you, board members. I appreciate your, your insight and put into that too. So this was where we're wrapping.
Yeah, Dr. Lee, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, so the plan-
My computer died?
Is it closed?
I think my computer died. Let me go get my plug. Hold on just a second, Mr. President. Are they, are they called too? Can you take over the meeting, Chan? I'm used to that Chromebook, it holds charge so well. Can they hear us or not?
You guys still here?
Yes, we're not. The audio is off your computer. Do you resume or you got it? You've got control of that, I think.
You can take back over the meeting, can't you? Let's see what happens. Well, I'm sorry. We're rolling right along. Alright, here we are. Are y'all in there?
Kim Miller could make sure that that are maintained and accurate.
Hey, are y'all in? Can y'all hear me?
College, I understand. We were saying that if Indian Creek does not have a, I guess, a sibling situation for another student to enroll or out-of-district transfer, that child will not be allowed to go to that school. We're really going to minimize from, I guess, kindergarten on up unless that kid has a sibling already there.
Well, I mean, that, that, that's, that's my question. It's been, is...
They never knew I was on.
Just to clarify, Dr. Lee, you're back on?
Yes, sir. We're back on. Can you restate your question?
For the, for the 2021 school year, this, the solutions piece of not allowing an out-of-district transfer starting at kindergarten, the year of enrollment into kindergarten, unless there is a sibling situation already in place.
Yes, sir, that's, that's our plan to...
For the students across the county that are already enrolled in a school, regardless of sibling, if they're already enrolled in a transfer situation, is that going to be maintained or is that changing as well?
That's going to be maintained, though. If they're already at that school, they're going to be allowed to continue going to that school.
Yeah, that's what we're talking, with the COVID-19. We're not going to make people change schools. They, we want them to go back to where they were at when all this started. Can you hear me?
I hear him.
Alright. So y'all can't hear me? Let's see.
Yeah, no, I still can't hear you, Doc.
Dr. Lee, you're in. If you click your microphone and you click it again, if it was reset.
Let's see.
I hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I'm going to go out of the meeting and then come back in. See what happens. Said he can't hear either one of us, so it may be... Let's see. Work session. They can't see us now either, can they? We're rolling really good.
My family were being noisy, so I needed, I needed that. It's not allowed in here.
Eyes too.
Alright, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Hear me.
Yeah.
Great.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Alright, it should, here it comes. Alright. Great. Alright, I'm sorry, I'm using a different laptop tonight. I usually use a Chromebook, and this laptop isn't holding a charge like that Chromebook, so, uh... Alright, now let me reshare my screen. Alright, there we go. And... Thank you for your patience. Did we answer your question, Mr. Preston?
I believe so. Just to get back to clarify, um, the, the way I'm understanding the presentation there was that for the coming school year, that unless there is a sibling situation, regardless of where the school is, there's a sibling situation that the transfer, um, will be limited to either a sibling situation already in place for an entering kindergartner. If there's not a sibling situation in place, the entering kindergartner will not be allowed to transfer.
At schools that are at capacity, there's some schools.
At Indian Creek, right?
Yes, at the schools that are at capacity. Does that answer your question, Mr. Preston?
So, so it's only Indian Creek is what you're saying? As far as the controlled growth by limiting future out-of-district transfer?
Well, it's a conversation we probably need to have. I want to make sure everybody's on the same page, uh, but we were, we were...
Well, I mean, we've got total transfers across the county. There are larger than four of our elementary schools, totally.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm not, I'm not opposed to transfers, it's not what I'm saying, but if...
Yeah, if, we need to, we need to focus on just people going to where their district.
Understand that. So unless there is a sibling situation in place, regardless of the school, that will be allowed, that transfer will be allowed to continue kindergarten level. For example, if there's a third grader enrolled, and there's a sibling that's, or, will allow the transfer.
Yeah, will allow the siblings, yes, sir. But the students who don't have siblings, we're not going to allow new transfers.
Right, is that, I understand that. I'm asking, is it regardless of the school?
Our intent was to focus on the schools with the capacity issues. If there's room to allow, um, those to continue to operate as they've been operating, that was the intent.
But I'm like, Brian, I'm trying to get that understanding now. You said Indian Creek, they was overcapacity. Okay, what if you have a sibling there and, um, a child there, and then the sibling wants to transfer them? That's my, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, we'll allow that if they've got a brother or sister there, yeah, they'll be able to. Let's say you've got a third...
You're going to say overcrowded?
Yeah, if you've got a third grader, Ms. Wilkerson there, and you've got one that's going to kindergarten there, we'll let them, we'll let them have the transfer. But...
So, so the reason I'm asking the question, the way I'm asking the question is, if Indian Creek is at capacity, and you're still going to allow the sibling transfer, regardless of the... We know for a fact, based on the phone calls we've received, that folks have sibling issues at many campuses and want to be able to continue. They've got a third grader, they want, and they've got an upcoming kindergarten, they want them to go to that school regardless of where the school, which school it is.
Yeah, we're going to allow that.
I, I understand. They would be on this. But if you've got a school with capacity and we're allowing that sort of transfer to continue, then you need to make that policy about no transfers for any school into kindergarten if there's not a sibling situation involved. Otherwise, you're just... You got to stop it somewhere and, and...
Yes, sir.
I mean, if, if they ever, the limit...
Then I have a policy on that.
The policy actually gives a lot of, lot of, uh, uh, I guess, flexibility.
To the campus administrator. Manipulate the policy. So, without getting into all that tonight, my question is, controlled growth by limiting future out-of-district transfers at kindergarten level, starting at the kindergarten level. But if there's no relationship to that school other than them being in district, right? There's not a, there's not a parent or a guardian that teaches at that school, or we allow that transfer, there's not a sibling issue at that school where we're going to continue to allow the transfer. Why isn't that not being equally applied to all the campuses?
Because all of them don't have, don't have overcrowding issues. Some of them have got room to handle. If they don't have a problem with overcrowding, I don't see where it's an issue. This came up because we had a couple of schools that had overcrowding issues we're trying to work on. I don't know why we would apply that to a school that says, listen, we've got plenty of room. If you get, the principal has got an overcrowding issue, they should be in this, this, this boat. But for the schools that don't have that problem, I don't, I don't know why we would apply that to them for no reason.
I don't think it's being applied for no reason.
I mean, if you've got a school that, that could handle some more students or like some more students, I don't know why we would, we would apply that to them. I mean, a lot of our, a lot, what I'm saying is, a lot of our rural schools could use some growth. They could use some people. Are we going to go cut, you know, 50 or 60 out of those? I mean, I, I don't see where that's affecting them the same way as what I'm getting at. I don't know why we would put that across the board. But y'all want to give that piece some more thought? But for right now, we know we're going to allow the siblings to continue. Y'all good with that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's not, that's, again, that, that's, that's the phone calls I've received.
Yes, sir.
It's about siblings, okay? But, but looking at the numbers here on the sheet, that if the sibling situation aside, that's, that's been resolved, and I think that's a good decision. But... Look at the number of folks that are rotating, I mean, I, I realize this is current transfers. This isn't talking about upcoming kindergarten. I don't know what the number is on upcoming kindergarten, right?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what that number is. We won't find that number out until they try to register, yes.
That's right.
But, um...
Alright, well...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I mean, if, if this is an effort, right, to... Transfers, and you don't apply it to all campuses at the, at entering kindergarten level across the county, then you're going to have the same situation come up. Because once that kindergartner's enrolled, and they've got a sibling coming up behind them, there you go. I mean, if, or, or might just leave it like it is.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Preston, I do. Uh, you know, the, the... The simple way to do it would just be to shut down any new transfers to, to any of the schools. But, you know, I don't know that all the board members feel that way, and I'd like for everybody to, um, feel good about what we're doing as much as possible. So, y'all want to continue this discussion at a later date, but we have put the rest of the sibling idea, and, um, the only question is, do we allow any transfers to any of the schools? And I know at our retreat, we talked about the fact that there were really five schools that are having the capacity issues, that being Westside, Satilla, Indian Creek, Eastside, and Ambrose. Those are the schools that are closest to capacity. And we, we talked about it at the retreat, not allowing transfers into those schools. Uh, but we would allow transfers into Rox and Mary Hayes, Wes Green, and Nichols, because there's plenty of room to those schools. Like, there's ones on that list right there that you're actually going to make a difference with. You look at Indian Creek, you got 202 and you got 45 going out. There's a big difference in there. But you look at Satilla, Satilla's got 60 to go out, 60 to come in. So if you make that policy, you're not affecting anything with it. They're still the same number. So I don't see why we're applying, we would apply that to them if we're not going to... They've got the same number going out as they do coming in. Ambrose is only 10 students different. I mean, you're not making a big effect. Indian Creek, there's 160 students different. I see that, I, I, I understand that, I get that. Um, you know, Westside's a lot closer. What I'm saying is, I just don't think it's going to help every school. So if it's not helping, then why are we, why are we going to do it with them?
I, I'm, and I'm, and understand me, I'm not saying it's going to help the schools, but then the situation that we've gotten ourselves into with the sibling question, which is, if we get a kindergartner, let's say, you know, the school's got plenty of room, and a kindergartner transfers in...
But I think you got in here, if you look at the discussion...
Not based on, not based on, not based on any reasons other than the desire of the family for the child to attend that school. It's not on their way to work, there's not a family member involved at the campus. They're, they're just, the, the families, they can, you know, going up and out of their way to take that child to that school for whatever reasons that they have. And there is room, let's just say, okay, there is, let's say there is room.
What I'm saying is, if you'll read the discussion that he's got below that chart...
If a child is a sibling coming along, you've, you've activated the sibling situation simply by that, that initial kindergartner enrolling. And at some point, that's got to, if, if we're going to talk about that coming to an end eventually at Indian Creek, which is, is what we're talking about, that once the sibling situation is, is no longer impactful at Indian Creek, that's a conversation as well, that once, once those students move through, that we, that we don't enable that to occur, then that's, that's been the, that's been the concern of the folks, be impacted by the transfer, so...
Well, y'all want to...
Well, I mean, I'm fine with just leaving the whole thing alone, but we're going to run into capacity issues, and we're also going to run into, quite frankly, some... Now, I want, I want our campus administrators to be confident in one another as well, because they work together, because they, they have a lot of input about this.
Yes, sir. Alright, we will, we will move forward with the guidance that we've got here with the board. I think everybody's good with the sibling transfer into Indian Creek and then the, all the schools. Uh, and our plan is to limit the enrollment into Indian Creek, especially since they've got the enrollment capacity issues. And we'll come back to the board and talk about the other schools moving forward. Well, you get on it, and it's kind of difficult with this, the way we're doing this. Carol, the conversation, we're cutting in and out, but, I mean, part of what I'm saying is, it's on here with your discussions about data. The process in place to control transfers is to monitor their enrollment, and the principal controls the transfers. So if you've got a school and that principal thinks that they're overcrowded, and they need to, to, you know, make some decisions about controlling those transfers, they can't. You know, the schools that are like, listen, we, you know, we can handle another 50 students. We hope people will transfer over here, they can make that decision. The way it's set up, and that, and that's all I'm saying is, I don't think that each school is in the same situation. And I think these principals need to have some say-so in whether or not they allow... Listen, if they've got room and they want them, let them allow the transfers. If they're like Indian Creek and they're overcrowded and they need to cut it off to an extent, let them do that. I just don't want to lump everybody in the same boat because our elementary schools, a lot of them are in vastly different situations. That, that's all I'm saying, you know, is, I think they should have some input on that. Well, now, I think...
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't disagree with that sentiment at all. But that's, you know, I think, I think that one of the reasons the situation's been in, in particular with, with Indian Creek and its capacity, is that they're supposed to, are to go to that school. But at the same time, you've had a tremendous number of in-district population growth in that, in that... that, in that school system, in that school district. So you may be talking about, less about transfers and more about district lines in the future, if you can't manage it by transfer.
Well, and what I was gonna say a minute ago is, it's become a district issue, and the reason we're having this conversation as a school district is because we're not gonna add on to that building for transfers. So that, that's why we have to have this conversation, and that, to me, that's what makes Indian Creek unique as compared to the other schools in this conversation, is the fact that if they're at capacity, we're not gonna add on for transfers, so what's the solution? Cut the transfers out.
I don't like you adding on if you align everybody, if you got a lot of siblings over there and they being able to transfer. So it sounds like it, they'll be adding on. So it sounds like you gonna have to add on to the building, 'cause if, if they already at capacity, it's not gonna be no room for the siblings to come.
Well, if they're just flat out not roomed, then, then some of those decisions will have to be made, but looking at the data, we feel like we could manage the sibling situation. So...
Well, if you don't manage it, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I think they did look at that, I'll be clear on that, looked at the siblings to make sure, so we, I don't want anybody to fear that we are overcapacity and our, our ratios are out of what we prefer in any of the classrooms at Indian Creek. But more importantly, to Brian's point and to Adam's, I think it's really a clear understanding with the parents that request the transfer that we allow, that we communicate, this is a, this is a school year, a school year decision. If we become a capacity, there becomes a capacity issue, we may not be able to allow it, you know, next year. So maybe we do need to go back to, talk about it a little bit, 'cause I agree with Adam. If we have to, I think that's great, but we may not always, and that goes to Brian's point. So setting clear expectations on the front end of when we can allow it, I think is important.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you say we already overcapacity at Indian Creek?
If you look at the charts, the way the Department of Education has a chart that we use to, to measure that, they, they would be, yes, sir. And that's why we were...
Don't sound like we got any choice, but we're trying to do something out there.
That's right.
I mean, we don't wanna keep overcrowding the kids in the classrooms.
That's right. Well, and that's what, we were gonna stop new enrollments, other than allow those siblings to go there.
Okay, I just...
Yes, sir.
I thought that's what you said, they were already over, so...
And I, it's just so everybody's clear, I'm okay with, if you're, if you're limiting, right, new students, out-of-district transfers into Indian Creek for the coming school year without, without impacting the sibling situation, I'm okay with that, okay? I'm just asking the question about the impact on the rest of the school system, because looking at the numbers, every single school is involved in a transfer situation. It's not, it's not necessarily putting those schools at capacity, but, but it's certainly impacting Indian Creek, and it's impacting Westside a great deal. And I think when you start getting into numbers over 100 that are transferring into a school, it's having an impact on that school, but...
Yes, sir, and we will certainly monitor it, and we may have to, to shut down some others, is, you know, is what may have to happen.
But, but when we leave this meeting, and I get asked, y'all restricting kindergarten transfers into Indian Creek for the next school year, is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm okay with that. The sibling situation aside, that's been resolved. Is it?
Yes. All right. Does that answer your questions? All right. Good discussion, and this is something we've been needing to talk about for some time, and this is really the first time we've talked about it as a board in a, in a public meeting. So I think it's good conversation for us to have, it's something that we do need to talk about. It's not, we can't just keep kicking this can down the road, because as we said earlier, we can't add on to schools for transfers and such as that. So it's an issue we're gonna have to address and continue to monitor. So thank you, board, for, for, you know, your insight into this, and we're gonna manage it for the boys and girls of Koff County. All right, the next item on the agenda is, let's see if I can get to the agenda. Oh, it's first participation we're not having tonight. Executive session. Let's do that in the regular meeting, we're already... All right. About 20 minutes later, let's just go on and we'll, we'll do that in the regular meeting. All right, so we will, we will shut down from this meeting, and board members, you'll go into that email that I had sent you that, for the 7:30 meeting, and you will log into the 7:30 meeting, and we'll pick up there with the 7:30 meeting, and then we'll go into executive session from the 7:30 meeting. In about five minutes, Chance, Ed, just gonna find out and make transition. Give us about five minutes to make the transition on the live stream, and we'll get back in here in the regular board meeting, the 7:30 meeting in about five minutes, all right?
Mr. Chair, do we need to go through the statement for executive session?
We're not going into executive session right now. We'll go into it, and we'll read that statement as part of the board meeting. We've got that in the agenda for the board meeting.
Okay.
So this meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.
Are we adjourned for a minute?
We're adjourned to work session, yes, ma'am. We'll come back into the regular board meeting. In about five minutes, we'll come back in to the regular meeting. All right. Thank y'all.